July 22nd, 2019, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis.
Before I do the prayer, I'd just like to mention, I'd like for all of you to keep in prayer, Ms. Vicki Taylor, who is the secretary over here in the mayor's office. This week, she was carried to the hospital with chest pains. They did have to use the paddles to bring her back. She had a heart attack and also out in the hospital, she had a stroke. But I saw her yesterday. She's doing a lot better. She's going to be out of work here for a few weeks. But keep her in your prayers because she's had a tough time the last few days. Shall we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day you've given us. We're thankful for all the many blessings we have, and may we always remember the blessings that we do have come from you. Father, today, we'd like to thank you for Ms. Taylor, who's been so instrumental in this county to our government for watching over the things as it goes through the county over here as a secretary. But most importantly, she's watched over many of the county commissioners in helping us in the work that we've done in the county mayors. We ask that you continue to give her strength in her problems she's had, and that you return her back to us to continue to help us in the things that we continue to do over here. Father, we ask that you be with this delegation today as we look at different issues of the county and different things as we plan. Give us the ability and the wisdom to look at these and make the proper decisions that we should as the county commissioners. Father, we are thankful for this county. We're thankful for what it stands for, and we ask that you continue to guide us and you continue to look after Rutherford. Be with us all, protect us and guide us. We offer this prayer in the Son's holy name. Amen. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Call the roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Chip Penyon.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Yeah.
David Jones.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Mike Bott.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gal. This time, we need to approve the minutes for our May 13th, May 28th, and June 24th meetings, and I'll call on our Chair, Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those three sets of meeting minutes, and they all appear to be in order. No corrections or additions, so I would make a motion to accept.
I have a motion and a second to approve May 13th, May 28th, and June 24th meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. No items withdrawn or deferred?
That's correct.
We're ready for new business. Item 6A, these are items submitted for preliminary plan approval. 6A1, item 17-1013, Chestnut Valley, Section 2, 55 lots on 38.78 acres, zoned RM, located along Valley View Road. Waldron Enterprises is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good morning, excuse me, good morning, commission members. This first item, as you stated, is a preliminary plan revision for Chestnut Valley, Section 2. The preliminary plan for this section was originally approved by the commission back in June of 2017. The change that they're making, you can see it on the screen here, Mike's zooming in a little bit, they're adding those four lots along Valley View Road. Thank you. And then they're also adding a fifth lot, Lot 164. Right there. Yeah, right there. Now, that's just for the mail kiosk, so that's the change they're making. Everything else, as far as the other lots, there really isn't any change to any of those. But since they're adding these extra lots, we felt it was appropriate to have a preliminary plan amendment, for lack of a better way to say it, for these additional four lots. You will see a final plat on this a little later in the agenda. We typically don't see final and preliminaries on the same agenda. The big reason you're seeing it here is because there's really not any utility extensions that need to be done beyond private service lines. So this was pretty straightforward as far as any kind of revision to the preliminary plan is concerned. Mike and I and staff, we've looked at these plans. We did have several comments on these. Those comments have been addressed, and this plan is in good order. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a motion and a second to approve 17-1013, Chestnut Valley, Section 2. Doug, what was in that area where those four lots were before?
I think they were just part of the other lot.
They were part of the original lots to the south, and it was just an area that they thought they could gain some extra lots, and they had to extend the service lines, water and step system lines to those individual lots. But we had to carve out a few areas where the topography was a little steep, and we've got one area that we'll need a geotechnical report in this Lot 160.
Okay, thank you.
The circled area.
Yes, sir. Right.
Any other questions?
Possible sinkhole.
All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B, these items are submitted for final plat approval. 6B1, 19-2042, Kathleen Brown, one lot on .94 acres, zoned RM, located along Stewart Creek Road. Kathleen C. Brown is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property seems to have been created without a subdivision plat. I'm not quite sure how that happened, but the plats before you will take care of that situation. We did have several comments on these, seven to be exact, but those comments have been addressed, and the reasons being brought before you today has to do with the fire hydrant waiver on this particular application. So with that, this plat's in good order. We'd recommend approval. I'm sorry, right away dedication, excuse me.
How long has this home been here?
I'm not sure. Mr. Everwater.
It's like a while.
Make a motion to approve.
There are already two homes on the property.
It's just a home and a barn. Yeah, it's not two living units on the property.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's just an accessory structure behind it.
Make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 19-2042 for Kathleen Brown. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B2, 19-2046, Chestnut Valley, Section 2. This is the same one we looked at before for final plat approval. Doug.
Yes, sir. I won't go into all the particulars. As you stated, this is the same, this is for the entire section, not just those five extra lots that we saw a little earlier. Again, the preliminary plan was originally approved back in June of 2017, and the amendments were considered just a little earlier in this agenda. Again, they've met the comments that we have identified, and we feel this is in good order, and we'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 19-2046, Chestnut Valley, Section 2. Questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B3, 19-247, Clear Creek, Section 2, 50 lots on 21.74 acres, zoned PUD, located along Ammerville Road. Parks Development is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in March of 2016. You'll recall, this is part of the Clear Creek Plan Development. You've seen that come through. It's been a few years since that's been through. This plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plan. The comments we had have been addressed, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. We do recommend approval of this. Right, yeah, and we've actually seen the site plan on Lot 140. It's the common area where the mail kiosk is going to be. We've already seen a site plan for that, so that's for your information.
Was this the subdivision, Doug? That was, the step system field was on one side of Ammerville Road?
No, that's Stone Wood.
Yeah, this is a little more recent. Their step system is in the bend of Ammerville Road, on the same side.
I remember this one.
Right in here.
This is the church, the school is over here. Sorry.
So, Mike, this neighborhood in the lower section has had some flooding issues, and I don't see any, maybe I'm just not looking close enough, I don't see any designations for elevation certificates on any of that area?
They do have minimum pad, minimum floor elevations on the ones backing up to the creek that require it.
Good. How about this area up here around Lot 58, 79, do those require them also?
Yes, yes, they do. They have them up here as well.
Okay, I got them.
All in this area. And what they did before, they were able to raise the lots on the first section out of here, and they removed all of the minimum pad, minimum floor requirements with the LOMAR letter of map revision to FEMA. And they most likely do the same here. But until we get that confirmation, we're showing these on the plat.
Looks like the mail kiosk is in the, the lot is in the creek also?
Yes. But it's, the parking area is here, and then the mail kiosk is in this area as well, and it'll be elevated as well.
Does that require an elevation certificate or anything? I mean, there's no designation on the lot that that has to be raised?
Not for, not for the kiosk itself. We just kind of look at the flood elevations and make sure the mail doesn't get soggy.
Neither rain nor sleet, Laura. Cold night.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with staff comments on final plat approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yeah.
Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6C, these items are submitted for site plan approval. 6C1, item 19-3033, Rutherford County Solid Waste, Leanna Recycling Convenience Center. New construction of office canopy and related structures totaling approximately 6,900 square feet on 3.8 acres, zoned IN, located along Sulfur Springs Road. Rutherford County is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The county plans to upgrade the facilities at the existing Leanna Convenience Center to include additional compacters, expanded recycling opportunities, and also improve access and site circulation. This plan also shows the location of a new fire station slash solid waste department office. With the institutional zone, which is what this is currently zoned, these uses are all permitted by right. We did have several comments. We've gone back and forth on this site plan several times, but we think it's in really good order now. There's one or two things that we still need to kind of tweak a little bit on the curbing on the site, but beyond that, the plan itself is in good order. So representatives are here. Mr. McNolan, he's here from our solid waste department representing them, as well as some members from Triad, the ones who actually put the plan together. So with that, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but the plan's in good order.
Mike, what about you?
Yes, sir. They'll have a stormwater detention pond in the back that meets and exceeds our requirements. Let me go to the grade plan, show a little bit better. This is the area of the stormwater management detention pond. They are going to also have a solid waste fire department building in this area here, and there's a small ditch in the back that'll drain to the pond. So the whole thing drains to the stormwater detention pond where it's held and released at pre-development rates, and then it'll release pond to the north at existing grade. There is a septic field that they've got to work around in the back. They've got that protected, but like I said, I'm happy with their design.
Glad to see an auto fluid disposal building. I think that's something we haven't had enough of, I'm afraid, of where a lot of the oils and antifreeze and things in this county go. Is that area, I'm assuming that has to be specially constructed or some sort of pan or something to keep it from getting away?
Matt can probably, or his consultant can add more information on that. From what I understand, there'll be tanks inside of a three-wall building or something and being closed, but they'll have collection tanks inside this building that will store the fluids. And most likely, any tank today has a secondary containment already built in, a double wall. But they, let me go back to the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm so proud for Leanna and overly jealous for this site myself, but I'm going to make the motion to approve.
I'm going to second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 19-3033 for Rutherford County Solid Waste. Other questions or comments before we move?
I just have one question. What are these blue lines?
Those are truck turn templates.
Okay.
Show that a big truck. Yes, sir. Truck turning radius. So you've got a semi can pull in here and come around, and then a fire truck can make a complete circle in this area and then back in to this area to be combined here.
I just want to make a comment on this. I've been out here for 46 years in the Leanna community, and we used to have open tops on the side of the road, and you couldn't dump your trash until somebody set it afire and burn it. Then it was clear again for another two or three days. This site, right now, is one car at a time, and I've seen it back up on Sulfur Springs Road. So this is very much needed for the community, and I applaud Mr. Nolan for pursuing this site, and we'll greatly appreciate it on our growing community out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to show you the cars stacked up to use it. That other image, the birds I view, their pictometry's having some kind of issues, but you could see all the cars stacked up to use this facility, so it does get a lot of use.
Other comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6C2, 19-3036, Willow Branch Landscapes. New construction of office, storage areas, and shop totaling 9,525 square feet on 4.4 acres, zoned CS, located along Franklin Road. Willow Branch Landscapes is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you'll recall, a portion of this property was considered for rezoning earlier this year. It was approved to Commercial Services by the Board of Commissioners back in April. The proposed use is consistent with what the applicant was proposing in his application, basically a landscaping business. Staff had identified several changes that needed to be made to this plan. Most of those comments have been addressed. I think Mike's got a few things he just wants to bring up for y'all's consideration.
Okay. There is a sinkhole that might be considered a stream, and I asked for verification of that, a hydrologic study. They did submit a geologic study, but I need a hydrologic study to make sure that this is not waters of the state. So if it is waters of the state, we're going to have to do some tweaking of the plan. When I was back in private consulting, I had a project in Smyrna where we discovered a spring and had to make some major revisions to the site, because if it is waters of the state, it will have stream buffers and have a protected status. So, or they'll need to get some kind of alteration permit from the state, aquatic resource alteration permit, so.
The water, if it is that, if the water would be flowing into the sinkhole.
Out of.
Out of the sinkhole.
Out of. It might be a spring.
Could be either, then.
It could, yes, sir. But it is an area that they've identified that they want to use for stormwater detention. So if it's not, and it's closed properly, and it's, you know, I don't have a problem with it all, but I just need verification from that. So on my project, it was as if I'd stomped a nest of baby eagles or something. I mean, it was pretty bad. So they're very protective of their springs and waters of the state, so I just need verification from that.
A proper motion would be to approve subject to those comments?
Yes, sir.
How long will that take?
Just depends on the backlog of the people doing the hydrologic study. You have to get certified through the state, and it's a partnership through the state, TDEC, and then also the University of Tennessee. This is a website for people that are certified to make that determination. So they look at the aquatic, you know, species of, or the animals or plants or anything that would indicate that it is a living stream. It's not showing up on their stream determination map, their overall map, but there are a lot of streams that aren't that, so.
So a private company with state oversight?
Yes. Anybody can get, anybody that goes through the coursework and can get this professional designation, you know, you have to have a background in this type of stuff, but it's something that we need to look at first, make sure, I don't want them to go through the same thing I did with my project in Smyrna.
Nothing can happen until you get that information back?
They won't be able to move ahead until we get that determination.
What if it comes back and it is a live stream?
Then you'll be seeing it again as a revised plan, I assume.
Should we just delay on this till we get that information back?
I think it's up to the commission if how comfortable you are moving forward with it. Chance, depending on what design changes they would have to make if that happened, it may not have to come back before the commission. If it's, there are regulations in the code, our zoning ordinance, that states what's considered minor versus a major deviation from the plan, so we would just go by that. But if it was substantial enough that it had to come back to you, yes, but just depending on what they did, so it's up to you.
Staff's recommendation today?
I'm personally, if Mike's okay, we're okay with moving forward with that.
We don't let them move ahead with construction, actual, you know, we won't hold a pre-construction meeting until all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So if you're okay with making a proven subject to this, I'm okay with that as well.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 19-3036, Willow Branch Landscapes. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Staff reports.
Yes, sir. Bear with us just a second here.
While Doug's going through that, I'll just remind everybody, our next meeting will be Monday, the 12th of August. That'll be a 6:00 PM meeting on the second floor of the historic courthouse. Monday, the 12th, 6:00 PM.
Very good. On your screens right now and also on your iPad, you'll see that there is a copy of some proposed amendments that we're going to be making, subject to your approval, of course, to the subdivision regulations. Now, the document that you have on your iPads, or even if you're just looking on the screen, it's six pages long. It's a lot, it's not nearly as involved as six pages long. The reason it's that long is because I, for everything we were changing, I had the current language, what we were going to change it to, and explanation as to why we were doing it. So there's several amendments, but I would consider these all housekeeping, as far as that. This is all part of Article 2, which deals with plat approvals, plan approvals, those kind of things. We do have to make some other amendments to some of the other articles, probably a little more in-depth things that you'll see in the future. We're not ready for those right now. This is what I would call the low-hanging fruit, as doing some upgrades and updates to our ordinance. But the big reason we're looking at this is we're just trying to identify some things we can do in our processes to kind of smoothen things out a little bit. Some of the things that we've noticed as we're reviewing plats and plans that need to be addressed, things that we look for now that aren't as explicit in our regulations as they should be. So that's really the biggest reason that we're looking at these. So I'll just kind of skim through these here just briefly, just bear with me just a few minutes. The first one has to do in Article 2, as you see, with the classification of subdivisions. Our current language, when discussing what's considered a minor versus a major plat, right away dedication is always one of those things that bumps something to a situation, like the plat we considered earlier, that Kathleen Brown plat. The only reason it really came to you is because they were dedicating some right away, and that wasn't consistent with the road plan. That was just because it was a prescriptive easement, their property lines went to the center of the road. When we wrote the regulation, I don't think we were really anticipating those type of situations, and there's so many of them out there where the property lines actually go to the center of the road. So typically, as part of the review, we just asked to dedicate that portion that's part of the road right away. They can't use it for anything, anyway. So what we ended up doing on this one is just changing the proposed language. You can see to add, consistent with the adopted Rutherford County Long Range Transportation Plan, and explicitly say that those wouldn't, those right away dedications for road prescriptive easements would not be included in that. So that's the first change. The next one is a little further on in Article 2. This has to do with the expiration of subdivision, final subdivision plats. I think you talked about this at the last day meeting regarding our current expiration for what we consider like the final plats we look at today on the Planning Commission, the larger ones. They are good, valid, if you will, for 180 days. When we did a little bit of research and looked around surrounding areas, most of them were different, most of them, there was one that was shorter, but everybody else pretty much was consistent with about a year. So rather than just keep bringing these things back, and it's pretty much just, you know, a formality when they're come back, because they're not changing anything, it's just a matter of the fact that they just waited too long to record the plat. Sometimes they run into issues with some of the utility companies getting things signed off on, sometimes has to do with the soils. You know, soils folks are backed up because of the amount of growth going on. So every now and again, they'll run into hiccups like that through no fault of their own. So we just figured, why not just bump it up to a year? That should eliminate a lot of the ones that come here after six months, because typically they'll be recorded within a year, just not necessarily six months. So that was the explanation for that. This next one, I'm not going to go into all of this. This is the current language that's there for submission of preliminary plans for our office to review. We've tweaked the language down in here, considering that we're going to be moving forward with an online submission system and everything. Rather than say you have to have X amount of paper copies and a digital copy, we just figured, we just kind of make it more generic and just say, once we get this in place, we'll have a better idea of what we really need. Rather than have to come back every few months and amend something, we just kind of left it a little vague, if you will, just that way we can make some changes to our process in-house without having to bring something back to you. So that just helps us be a little more flexible in that regard. And then same thing with accordance of the time schedule and copy requirements established by the department. That's just if we change our deadline structures and things like that, it's already reflected in there. We don't have to make a special amendment for that. Clarified on this next section for preliminary plans, that the north point should be Tennessee State plane and not magnetic. We have moved away from magnetic north, and we use Tennessee State plane pretty much on everything, which is consistent with what our regulations state in Article 2K, anyway. Construction plans, this is really just looking at, again, allowing them, the engineers, to submit something at a scale, rather than saying it has to be at 1 to 100 or 1 to 50. We can say, we'd like to see 1 to 100, or at a scale that best represents the proposed development at the discretion of the county engineer. That gives us some flexibility built into that. Article 2H4T with construction plans, again, this just goes back to what we talked about a moment ago about the number of plans, how many do we need? It's kind of determined on a case-by-case basis, depending on the complexity of the construction plans that are submitted. So we just went ahead and kind of, again, just kind of watered down that language a little bit, rather than requiring a specific amount, just on a case-by-case basis. The final plat language, this is similar to what we were just talking about with preliminary plans as far as submittals and different things like that. Actually, I used a lot of the same language that was in the preliminary, so just to kind of keep them consistent, so that's all that's doing. Again, adding for, on final plats, again, instead of magnetic, as you see up here, we use state plane coordinates, so just making that more explicit. On final plats, there are times when we want to see a driveway culvert chart. So on this, the current language is pretty much, it almost has to be on everything, but there are plats that don't necessarily require that. So we added some permissive language in there, and the designs would have to be approved by the county engineer as far as the sizes go, not necessarily, you know, working together with the design engineer. We also put in there the acceptable materials that we would accept for those, and what the minimum size of that is. the minimum size of that is. Just a few other things, final plats, this is just add, making sure the statement of purpose is shown as either note one or in a separate box. Sometimes when we're looking at minor subdivisions especially, it's not always evident at first what you're looking at, so having that purpose statement on the plan is helpful to us. So we just wanted to be a little more explicit with that. We also, under the, this basically our checklist for final plats, adding a few things, a benchmark with vertical datum, that's very helping establishing elevations. Following note regarding drainage easements, we've started requiring this on all the plats. Basically, if there's going to be any improvements within a drainage easement, if there's any improvements that have to be made, and there's, if there's something like landscaping or something like that, actually driveway, yeah, then, you know, those repairs would be up to the property owner. And then there are some plans, we see water quality buffers, so those are just being added to the list. This next section to I four, the final plats, has to do with the utility certifications that we see on final plats. There are times when certain providers don't have to sign off on those, namely the groundwater protection folks, depending on the type of subdivision it is, if they're just shifting a property line, they don't have to sign off on it. So this just gives us the ability to say, okay, you don't need to put that one on there. That's, in practice, that's really how we do it anyway, but if, we just wanted to make sure it was explicitly mentioned that way in the regulations. This was a pretty, a one that, another one of those where the original language, what's current is, the final plats have to be drawn to a scale of one to 100. What we ended up doing was kind of substituting some of that language in there as well. Typically for one to 100, you need those with conventional septic tank lots, because the soil maps that they use are all on one to 100. So that's typically when we see that. There are other plats that we look at that don't necessarily have to be at one to 100, they can be at one to 50 or a different type of scale, but this gives us the ability to be flexible in that regard. So that's just a quick overview of those. Again, there's nothing of substantial changes I would consider in here, I think those will come later. But as of right now, I think this will go a long way in helping us kind of streamline some things. Anytime there's a, an amendment to the subdivision regulation that does require a 30-day advertising period, we've already sent the legal notice for that, that ran just a couple of weeks ago. We plan on bringing this up at the next planning commission meeting in August for a public hearing. Final approval for these are with the planning commission. These don't have to go to the board of commissioners. So once it's approved, if it's approved in August, we'll go ahead and update the regulations and they'll be in effect at that point. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know that was kind of just real quick going through all that, but if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I think the only question I had is in the construction plan section and maybe the final plat, do we need to put anything in there about a contour interval, or have you had any issue with that in the past?
I have not.
Is it, you know, if you want it on one foot, two foot, five foot, whatever that may be?
I think it is, it does say in our regulations, at least two-foot interval, so I'm happy with that. And, you know, more information is always better, one foot would be great, but a lot of times it's not available.
I didn't know what construction plans are dictating that would help or not.
The five-day, plats have to be here five days before the meeting, is that, you're taking that out and y'all are going to vary that, and how will an applicant know?
We have a, a list of submittal deadlines and meeting dates and everything that we, that's on our website and is, is part of the, the submittal package.
Y'all, somebody give back water to y'all.
Right. No, and I'm not worried about that as far as, I understand where you're going with it, but yeah, we always, when people call, I mean, our engineering, the big engineering firms in town, they've got copies of our deadline sheets. They know, and typically when we kind of revamped it about a year or so ago, we went to two different reviews. You know, the first, they submit, we do a review, we send them comments, we give them a week to get those comments back to us, we review what they've done, and we send any follow-up comments. And then those, that final version, the ones you see today, for example, were the ones that we got last Wednesday. And as you can see, I think it's really helped as far as the, the number of comments that are addressed. You'll notice that most of the plans and plats that are brought before you now, maybe one or two comments are outstanding, if that. A lot of the one we looked at today were pretty much in order. So the system has worked, but this gives us a little better flexibility to take care of it in-house. If we see a change that needs to be made, we can react to that a lot easier if it's not, the dates are not specifically stated in the regulations. That's why we put that language in there about a, a schedule as determined by our office, but it's not something we're just going to change in the middle of the process, you know, we'll, we'll, if we decide to make a change, we would let the engineering firms know that we're doing that. And I've sent, actually I've sent a copy to some of the engineers in town, the larger firms about this, hadn't received any comments back yet, but like I said, this is all really more on process and kind of clarifying some things. It's housekeeping, in my opinion. I don't really see anything here that's controversial.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to submit a question to Superintendent Brooks, if I may.
You may.
It's going, it'll, it'll be simple, I promise. Can you think of, one of these is regarding the right of way, kind of an automatic annexation, I guess it would be your assumption of that right of way. Can you think of any interest, any instances where we would need to exercise caution, or we would not want to assume a right of way on a, on a, on a, on road frontage?
In general, no, I can't. I do trust that Mike has those, you know, our best interests in mind when he's looking at these, Doug, but I can't think of any specific instance where that will be, that could be an issue.
Actually, there is one recently, um, up in, gosh, where there was, and actually a barn in the area that would be dedicated, so we, we decided to use a reservation strip instead of dedication. So the barn could stay and function as it has for its life, but we wanted to reserve that area for, you know, future right of way if we had to, but I can't remember the exact name of that plat, but it was.
Does the passing of this automatically then, uh, give us the right of way if somebody goes through this?
No, no, no.
So we don't have to take it if we don't?
Right. So what, what's happening is you're having to see all these little minor plats where the deed goes to the center line of the road. So instead of, you know, having y'all review all these little minor plats, that it's just a simple dedication, they're going to leave it to the staff approval.
Shady, shady lane, we've seen one or two on there, and that would be an example of what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Well, even the one that we saw today, wasn't on Shady Lane, but earlier in the agenda, the, there was one that came through, you know, the Kathleen Brown plat. I mean, there was really, beyond the right of way, there was no reason to bring it here. I mean, we could have had that done and out of the, probably been recorded by now. So again, it was never our intent, when we thought of right of way dedications, we're thinking for, you know, larger developments along a road that has identified improvements under the county's long range transportation plan, where they have to dedicate 10, 15, 20 feet or something like that of additional space, we weren't taking, we didn't think about these little, little one-lot subdivisions that their keys go to the center of the road. That was never our intent when we were putting that regulation in there.
And there was, there was another example, we did not dedicate right of way. The right of way dedication would have created a setback encroachment violation, because the house was already there, and dedicating the 25 feet would make the, the house non-compliant. So we just tell them, told them to put a reservation strip on there, and it was essentially a, a prescriptive easement in writing on the plat, that the highway department can continue to take care of the right of way, the road, the ditches and whatnot. So, you know, it's, it's a case-by-case kind of thing. We'd like to get the right of way, you know, so Greg can work without being hindered, so I mean, we, we do.
Well, I'm comfortable with that. I just don't want to have, be forced to assume responsibility for something that we don't necessarily want or need.
Yes, sir.
Right, right.
I have a question.
Yes.
There was a period of time when you were having plans turned into you that were really premature, that you were finding many, many things that were just, you know, you were basically catching all, all the errors and they were just fixing, and so it was creating a lot of extra work for you all. And so I guess that's one of my questions is, do you, do you have any, anywhere in there that gives you the latitude to say, if I hit four or five, you know, things, it's not your job to go find every single one of their errors, is my point. So do you have a point where you can say, this is just simply not ready for us, and you just reject it, and then they have to find their, you know?
It's, a lot of it is done on a case-by-case basis. Do we have any specific regulations in here that state if you miss X amount of things on our checklist, then you have to send it back? We don't. I, I don't know how you'd really draw something like that up, because it's, it's almost different for every plan that you look at.
I just want you to have the discretion to say, this is not ready for me.
Well, we took your, your, your words and comments and we incorporated that, so a lot of times you won't see the plans that have 30 comments or whatever, they, we'll just tell them, say, it's not ready.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, is there's a town when it's not ready for us, but there's also a town, it's not ready for you. And that's my point too, is I don't want you doing their job for them, finding every single little thing. If it's wholly not ready for you, you need to be able to say, this is not ready for you.
And we have done that.
Send them back.
Yeah. I mean, and, I mean, some even this year, where it was submitted for our review, after looking at the plan, I just called the engineer in question and said, I'm not going to waste my time looking at this anymore. There's that much wrong with this. It's just not done.
It's just not completed.
Yeah, so.
That's what I wanted.
And you can tell.
Because you've done a great job keeping those from us, but only bringing us the things that are really, you know, ready to be advanced. I just want to make sure that you, you have that same protection, that you can say, this is not ready for me.
Now, and honestly, I'll just say this, even if we come across one that's like that, and we say, you need to bump this, there's no way this is ever going to get approved in this situation, in this condition, if they still said, well, we want, we want to move it forward anyway.
There's a time crunch or something.
Yeah. We want, we'll put it on the agenda.
We'll read every comment.
We'll put it on there, but we'll tell them, you know, just so they know that they're going into it with their eyes open, that there's a lot wrong, and we'll tell you, you know, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on this. And sometimes, you know, it could just be one comment, but it's such a major comment, you know, so even if we ran into a situation where, let's say we had something in the regulations said, if you, if there are five or more things that are still left to do, then this isn't ready, that would fall under that, it would only be one, but if it happens to be the one that, you know, this could impact the entire design, yeah, of the whole development, then.
That's what I'm saying.
Back to the individual comment, y'all need some discretion.
Yes.
As to determine how, how big a deal it is.
Right, and we work with the firms, you know, as much as we can, but, you know, there, there have been times when we've called them up and just said, you know, this needs to cook a little longer, wait till next month.
You've got that flexibility, and that was your question?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
Good question. So y'all feel comfortable in saying this is not ready?
Yes, sir. I have had a recent project where they, like Doug said, one comment required a major revision. They showed a 30-foot buffer, but it was actually a 60-foot buffer, and they had detention ponds, you know, lots and everything in that buffer, and I said, we can't move forward with this, you need to redesign.
Good deal. Good question. You need anything out of us today?
As long as you don't have any other comments or things you'd like us to change, there's nothing that needs to be done, because it's going to be on the next agenda for a public hearing, so there's no motion or anything that needs to be made.
Let me just ask this, everybody comfortable with taking these forward?
Okay.
I know that's not a vote, but.
That's fine. That, that's really all, a little head nod and, you know, a wink and a thumbs up, it's good.
Anything else?
Yes, Chairman Phillips and Commissioners, I'd like to welcome, stand up, Ben Friend. He is our new Public Works Engineer. He's working for Greg, but he'll also be working for me. Comes to us from TDOT, so we're excited about his experience and knowledge that he brings to us. Sorry, Lee, we, yeah. Lee's, works for TDOT as well, so, but we're, we're excited that we've got another engineer here, and I've got another engineer work starting in August, and I'll introduce them when they, when that comes around.
Fantastic.
Yes, yes.
What, what was your last name, Ben?
Friend.
Friend?
Ben Friend.
Welcome aboard.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. In regard, in regards to the long-range transportation plan, that was in the budget, right, for 2020? What is your plan, or what are the milestone dates on getting that thing rolling, and who will, who will the players be in that group? I'm just curious.
Right, well, and at that point, we haven't made a decision on that yet. We've been in conversation with different consultants, as well as GNRC, Greater Nashville Regional Council, about the possibility of putting, putting that plan together along with an update to our comprehensive plan. I reached out to their director, Michael, Michael Skipper, a couple of weeks ago, but he was out of town, and after speaking with Mayor Ketrin about it, I thought the next thing to do would be to have him come down and talk with the mayor, maybe get Jeff involved as far as the chairman of the planning commission, just to get an idea of how we want to move forward with that. And now I think he just got back in town, Mr. Skipper, so we're going to try to work something out here in the next week or two.
Will, will, how much will we involve the city?
Well, interestingly enough, yeah, we.
Or currently is a cursory invitation.
Yeah, we actually, Mike and I went and met with the city, or last week, as a matter of fact, about the long-range plan. And, you know, basically what I told them, I'll tell you, is that I think what their concern was, is, you know, they wanted to make sure that we did incorporate their recommendations into what we're looking at, as well as Smyrna, Laverne, you know, whatnot, which I told them, I said, yes, that was always on the plan to do that, we want them at the table. Now, I did say at the same time, I said, now, understand, I said, this is the county's plan, it's not the city's. I said, we may, after looking through some things, we may like a different alternative more than the one that's in the city's plan. At that point, we could have discussions with the city about what we think might be the best thing to do. So, yeah, they're, and we told them, you know, with no uncertain terms, that we wanted them involved in this process, and we wanted to make sure that their data was reflected in whatever we look at. So, yeah, we've had that conversation.
Okay.
Are you also having conversations with the surrounding counties? Because I know, you know, it seems like Nolanville and Smyrna kind of growing together, and so I'm just thinking about that road network, specifically on that western side of the county. I mean, I'm sure it's probably true everywhere, but that's what's.
And on those lines, I've actually met with representatives from Smyrna, Williamson County, Franklin, Nolanville, and also Brentwood. We have a meeting coming up here within the next week or so, to talk about, you know, the Rocky Fork interchange area, the proposed interchange, and a connector road between Smyrna going out toward Nolanville, like, what was the road? I forgot the name of the road. But, but yes, we've, we've had that conversation and are having it right now.
Do you expect any movement on the Rocky Fork any time in the next 10 years?
I really don't know, honestly.
That's part of, one of the key ingredients is to make it more of a, a regional connector, and they need more.
Make a road south, west.
To it, yes.
Oh, at Nolanville.
Yes, sir, right. And that's, that's, that's a key factor, I think.
That's a needed thing, and.
Yes, sir.
It would be an asset to Smyrna.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I think that's been one of the biggest hiccups for that particular interchange over the last several years, is they don't feel it's regional enough of a improvement, and, but, I mean, we're seeing even from the county standpoint, the, the county standpoint, that this is beneficial for us as well, and this can impact us, it can impact Williamson County, city of Franklin. So I know that's been one of the things that, that's been kind of a hangup. Now, even if it does get approval, I mean, something like that, I mean, it's years before it's ever installed, but the big thing, and if you remember about a year or so ago, the county commissioners that are on the board, there was a resolution too, actually, that were passed. One of them had to do with supporting the Rocky Fork interchange, and then there was One of them had to do with supporting the Rocky Fork interchange. And then there was a second one that was considered at that same meeting that directed us, when we come up with a long-range transportation plan update, that that's like the top project. So, those resolutions by the county commission have both been passed. Again, that was about a year ago or so.
And then how do you factor in, um, like Epsom Road? You know, we always talk about areas like that, that are just in such dire need of improvements. How, how would you factor something like that into the long-range transportation plan?
Well, it's on, of course, it's on our plan right now, currently. It's also on the state's long-range plan. Now, I don't think it has the highest priority right now. But as we start seeing, and McEwen, that's what it was, as we start seeing more and more development and development potential down in the Epsom Road area, we're hoping that maybe that starts getting lifted up in the states.
The schools that are going in.
Right.
You know, I just, um, and then I know too, like the neighbors were having issues on the other side with people, you know, G, basically their GPS taking them, you know, through neighborhoods. And so, I didn't know if those were any of the kinds of complaints that, you know, somehow get factored into, you know, the road system. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Cause I had, I had that complaint recently. I was, had a chance to speak at the Smyrna Senior Citizen Center, and there were some folks that lived out off of, um, Sulfur Springs in the direction of eight forty, and they were talking about, you know, and I guess they've called and complained to Sheriff and Greg and, you know, everybody. Um, and I told them, they needed to contact your office. So, because as we updated the major thoroughfare plan, we needed to know the roads that needed work for whatever reason. And, and their issue was, you know, there's semis, you know, using their road that's not constructed for semis. So, it's those kinds of things. I just wanna make sure that we're folding in all that sort of anecdotal stuff that maybe you can't find somewhere, you know, on a, on a map.
Right. No, I, yeah, we have conversa, I mean, amongst ourselves, we have conversations about Epsom. We have conversations about Sulfur Springs, especially with a lot of the development going on in that area. You know, a lot of it, it's already identified under our plan currently as a five-lane road, Sulfur Springs Road is. And, you know, a lot of it just comes back to, where's the funding gonna come from to pay for a widening like that? So, that's, that's where we always seem to hit the brick wall, is how we fund those kind of improvements that we know need to happen. Plus, with Sulfur Springs especially, there needs to be some serious consideration given to possible realignment, uh, because of the curves and the, the three-way stop right there where the Dollar General is and all that. So, but, yeah, a lot of it comes down to how we're gonna pay for it.
Well, can we, can we chat about that for a second? Or do you guys, are you in a hurry to adjourn, or can we, can we chat about that? We, we've got Greg here, and we've got Commissioners. Ah, okay. Well, I mean, we, here, here's the thing.
Greg might be in a hurry to get out of here.
We just, we just rolled off, uh, uh, our, our budget month, right? And that was a painful experience. Rhonda and Pat, it's, you're on budget, right? Well, I know Rhonda is. Painful experience. And, you know, what we learned was Public Works, Greg's budget, is just for putting out fires, and mainly for paving. His, his budget is really not for fixing things in the future, or, or widening projects in the future. It's just. It's, exactly. Thank you, Lee, for putting the proper words together. So, you know, as I'm reading and watching all the budget meetings on TV, I, I'm trying to think, where is our rainy day fund? Where are we putting money aside for widening projects, Epsom, Sulfur? I mean, every Commissioner's got a road or two in his district that is in dire need of improvement. But where are we budgeting that money for in the future? So, we're coming along with the long-term or long-range transportation plan, and there'll be some smart folks that will, I would assume, rate the roads that are in the most need of widening or improvement from safety standpoint, transportation loading, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, then what? What, somebody, somebody tell me, okay, we've got these five roads, over the next, picking number five years, we want to do something with. Where does that money come from? Is it come out of the general fund? Is there, is, do we need to, do we need to establish a, a special fund? Is there a fund already somewhere that we're just not putting money in? Somebody tell me, are we putting money aside? Help me out, I, cause I'm confused.
Well, as far as is there money being put aside for road improvements, um, I, I'm not sure if there is or not. I've, I've never been made aware of any.
Okay, let me, let me ask the Commissioners. Why in the world are we not putting money aside for future road improvements?
Mike, one of the balls is in your court.
Yeah, on the Public Works side.
Public Works has been given the opportunity to look at an overlay system such as this commission look at and report back.
Yeah.
As soon as you get on that, the sooner we could have some opportunity.
I'm, I'm on it, and I'm just so dumbfounded that the county as a whole, for all these years, apparently, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm just getting into it, and the more I get into it, the more I'm thinking, holy smokes.
As, as a county commissioner, as a long-term county commissioner, the, the day of reckoning is, is fifteen, twenty years behind us.
Yeah.
And, and what we're going through right now is unacceptable to citizens of Rutherford County. Just to get from point A to point B, wherever that is, especially if it's across town, from whichever direction you're going, uh, s- some type of road improvement that involves, um, uh, the development community has to be part of that process. What we looked at before, we tried our best to take out funding and just say, this is the process. If you wanna build this many houses, the roads have to be improved, not saying that you have to do it. But with no road improvements, this is the number of houses that you can build. And, and that has to be part of the process, whether the county and/or the development community can form a partnership, i- is what has been on, uh, this Commissioner's mind for a long, long time. Uh, also, even the possibility, y- y- you know, Mike, what we've, what we've done with the school board for a number of years, and we just increased that, quote, maintenance budget. Um, I, I've always thought we could do something very similar to that in the road department, to set aside some cents, uh, out of the county budget for road improvement or road construction, or new road construction, which would coincide with our long-term plan. That would have to be something, I think, that the county commission could look at or should look at. The big problem with that is that, uh, there are those county commissioners who are saying, no more taxes, we have to live within our budget. And, and I get that, a hundred percent get that. But unless we do something, we're going to continue to go in a direction that the citizens are gonna complain about. I also get that. So, somehow, some way, those two sides have to come to some type of an agreement, that something has to be done. The, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that, that Williamson County's not doing a better job than we're doing. And maybe Greg knows what they're doing. Uh, maybe they're, just have the budget to be able to accomplish those things. I think that they have this overlay system to where they can get some, uh, some help from the development community in, in improving roads. But I also remember the conversation saying that they rarely, rarely had to utilize, uh, uh, that. And, and what we were looking at was a tool for our toolbox to be able to utilize something similar to that. It didn't work out. But hopefully, with Public Works' input, uh, to come back to make a recommendation that this body can take a, a second look at, and then tweak and improve and, and take before the county commission, maybe something can get done there. But there probably also needs to be some, some dedicated funds, similar to what we're using the school board. It was a nightmare dealing with the schools' request, year after year after year, to do maintenance, cause it wasn't in the budget, and they would always come back, this air conditioner's out, this roof is leaking, give us funds to do it. So, we gave them their own funds. And it would be cool if we could give the highway department some dedicated money outside of this, and it wouldn't just be maintenance. It would be something that would coincide with our long-term transportation plan and/or, uh, a project that really needed to be done, uh, such as some of these connector roads. Um, and that would be something that would really have to educate not only the county commission, but also the general public, that it, in essence, has to be done, or will never, ever improve the gridlock that's, we have and that's coming. So, so from this Commissioner's perspective, I, I, I've thought about those type of situations for a number of years, but also knowing that it would have a really difficult time getting through the county commission. It's a tax increase.
Commissioner. You know, you said there, holy smoke about that. I don't think holy smoke was the term that was ever used.
I cleaned it up quite a bit.
But, uh, you, you know, and you mentioned the, uh, the time period there of looking at a road in five years. Five years can't even be looked at a road. Uh, I think you're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve years for any kind of road that we're looking here, of what we've got to do by the time you, you gain right-of-ways, you gain everything we have to do to build a road, and what we have to do there. Yeah, I have to look back, and, and I see, uh, our representative from the school, schools out here, and glad to see you here, Trey, and, and, and part of this. But I remember back when we were first even mentioning the possibility of a high school out there off of Highway ninety-nine, Rock Vale. And I went to, uh, Senator Tracy at that time, and I said, can we get a traffic study done out there on that highway? And he immediately went to the state and got a traffic study on that one highway there, a- and they did that traffic study. And that was before that high school was even brought to the commission to be approved, or even to the education committee to be discussed. And they did it. And the thing was, though, they come back and said, but we're not gonna help you with it. Uh, we'll give you a traffic study, but we're not gonna help you with it. They said, you'll have to come up with your own funding. And pretty much, that's the way it's been, hasn't it, Trey? That we come up with that own funding for that, what's been done out there the last few days. And it took years to get that traffic study and where we are out there right now. So, what you're talking about there, and as we talk about twenty-twenty's traffic, uh, plans here, you're exactly right. Um, planning for this takes, uh, a lot of prior effort to come up with this funding and how we do that, and it just hasn't been done the way it is. I, I think within the county of Rutherford, they, where we are right now, as we've evolved soon within budgeting, is try to keep your head above that water to take care of what we're doing. Uh, we, we've had all of this, um, but, now, everybody keeps throwing this word growth out there. And, uh, I got amused the other day of, of another county that was having a problem, and they threw growth into it, and they were nowhere near growth like we were, but they were using that too, so it seemed everywhere. But, but you're exactly right. For us to continue to look at this, we're gonna have to do that planning right there. And, and everybody talks about taxes, and, and how do you pay for this, and how you go that way. It's gonna have to have some creative ways of finding a method to help pay for these roads and this funding. But, uh, a road, a road to somewhere takes a long time to get it there.
The, the complications of adding additional funding to the road department is compounded by the issues we have with solid waste, and the issues that, uh, we have with, uh, brick and mortar for other things, especially for our school system. It's just, it just compounds the issues so much. It just makes it so complicated. And that's what, uh, a lot of citizens have concerns about. But the whole deal, the whole deal comes right down to us, as a county, having very little options other than property taxes. And that's part of the equation too, that we have to come up with, is something other than just constantly going back to property owners and, and, and raising their taxes, or has to be other revenue options. And we have to do something about that. And the commission has been trying. But it's kind of fallen on deaf ears. And that, that's where our legislative delegation, uh, comes to the forefront by helping us do some things like that. So, they're part of the equation too.
I, I have just a couple of thoughts I wanna share with Mike. This is one of those areas that's just gonna take leadership. It's gonna take somebody, and I'm looking at him probably, who's willing to, to take the lead on this, because it's very similar to the situation that we were in, in looking at the road networks surrounding the new schools out in Christiana. You know, if it hadn't been for the determination of Commissioner Phillips to make sure that the very next school project included the road network, we would've never even had that conversation. It's gonna be a culture change for not only this commission, but also for the road board and for Superintendent Brooks, because like you said, they've traditionally only, as a county, we've only ever maintained roads. We've not built roads. I don't think we're gonna be able to rely on the state. We're gonna have to take care of ourselves. And we're gonna have to figure out a way to do it. And so, what I would like to see would be sort of a partnership between your committee and the road board, and possibly this committee, and of course factoring in, you know, giving the folks from schools, you know, seat at the table. Because I'm, I'm thinking about it in terms of the same way we do, um, once a year, we have our annual health and ed budget, Board of Education meeting. And it's so, everybody can be in the same room at the same time, hearing the same issues, the same numbers, and just, you know, being able to move forward on solutions. And I think you're gonna have to have a similar arrangement with your committee, with the road board, possibly with budget, whoever the other people are that need to be in that room. But, uh, somebody's gonna have to take leadership to say, once this plan is done, how are we gonna prioritize? How are we gonna implement? You know, where are we gonna begin to do that? The, the, the roads around the schools are naturally gonna happen, because we're gonna make sure they happen, they're gonna have to happen. So, what are the other areas, you know, like in Epsom, you know, if we, if we go to the state and we say, we're willing to put X amount of dollars towards this project, will you put X amount of dollars? There were years ago, I went to, I think it was one of the, um, oh, what's the one we go to every year?
Power Ten.
Power Ten Conference. And, um, the director of TDOT, he spoke then, and he said, this is my budget for all ninety-five counties. And so, I have to make it go as far as I can. So, if we're willing to put some matching funds to a project, your project moves up the list, because it's less money out of their budget, and they get a road project completed. And so, it's that kind of thinking, that kind of forward thinking, and like I said, just true partnership. We're just gonna have to create it, we're gonna have to build it, because we've never done it before. And it, it's the same thing we did with the schools. We, you know, for us to look at the roads around Christiana, we'd never done it before. It was painful, it was uncomfortable. You know, it was, it wasn't, it's like making sausage, it wasn't pretty, you know, but at least we were able to sort of ha, begin to have that conversation. Um, so anyway, that, that's what I would say is, we're gonna have to form some, some internal partnerships. And, and build that initiative and make it start to happen. We, if we wait on the legislature, if we wait on the state, if we wait on, you know, the federal government to come through with funds, we're still gonna be waiting.
I've got some ideas, and I'll, I'm, I need to check with Nick about some legalities, about a task group formation, about what we can do, so.
Well, cause just like with this group, we're a recommending body, you know. The, the planning commission, we can recommend, but we can't fund. We can't authorize anything. But your committee, you can recommend funds go towards something. So, again, that's part of the reason that I'm saying a lot of the leadership is gonna have to come, I think, out of your committee, is because you can make formal recommendations for funding on things.
This, this committee can, though. It's sort of like a bedtime story. I've heard this a bunch. In a few years, we go to sleep, and in a few years, it comes back up, and in a few years, Dave gives, he's heard this. But we can, just say Walloagro Road. Just not picking on Walloagro Road, but we talk, I remember talking about this years ago. Our development is out there now, and we talked about how much money does this development need to apply to improving Walloagro Road to two thirty-one from, from those developments? And we had, that's when we had this conversation. And, and this is a good conversation, but it didn't go anywhere. So, there's been more, if all those developments had, had contributed some at that time, Brooks might've had some money for Walloagro Road. Now, if, if we do start to fund for each individual road, I don't know if we do it for each road and let it build up, or all those into one pool and go to another road somewhere, I don't know. I don't know, that's the way to do it. But no money coming in, don't matter, we don't have anything to do then anyway. But, uh, but there's a lot of development, and there's gonna be a whole lot more development. That, that, uh, and every day we lose an opportunity, you know, strike one, strike two, strike three, they're out, we didn't, didn't do anything. So, Mike, good luck.
Well, you know, i- in, there are sewer impact fees in some areas where subdivisions or areas of town that have sewer improvements pay a, uh, more of an impact fee because of the new sewer. Why couldn't you do that to roads? You live within so many miles of a new road improvement, you're impacted, because you're getting the benefit of this new, I'm, I'm just.
Right.
I'm brainstorming.
Right. And that gets back, I think somebody mentioned earlier that, you know, the, the county's authority to create new funding sources is very limited.
Yeah.
By the County Power Relies Act.
And this, and this task group, it could be a couple of us, a couple of Public Works, a couple of budget folks, a couple of representatives from the road board and Greg Brooks. I mean, this could also take on a, a, almost a lobbying, or at least not necessarily a lobbying, but we could also then put pressure on our representatives. lobbying, but we could also then put pressure on our representatives. Or if we had lobbyists, be in constant contact with them to say, we've got to make some changes to the law. So we have more free will to do things.
I agree.
One observation I've had, and I think our ancestors did a better job. When I was a kid, on into young adulthood, 60s, 70s, 80s, there were a lot of one lane roads, gravel roads in this county. And they got widened, then they were tarred and chipped. And now I'd say 90 plus percent of those are hot mixed, you know. And I think they did a better job improving the roads then than we're doing now. I've been told that we need a billion dollars worth of roads in this county. And I don't find that hard to believe anymore. But I get the funding to do that. It'll take a powerful lobbyist, Mike.
Yeah, I know. You know, I remember as a kid, and I grew up in Oklahoma, but I remember as a kid, when the county would come and want to gravel or hot pitch our county road, every, every person on that road had to pay a little bit. They had to, they had to throw money in the pot to get the road improved.
Yeah. They were carrying roads back in the 60s and 70s from one lane gravel, you had to pull over to meet someone into, you know, pretty good two lane rural roads then. A lot of people gave dirt and people were excited to get it, so they gave right away. So I don't think they're as excited to give right away now because it leads to more houses, more traffic, you know. So it's a catch 22 sort of.
Well, you know, we, as commissioners, the number one complaint, or at least the top two I get is traffic.
That's absolutely, the people won't talk about schools, so many people are coming, they'll talk about the traffic. You're exactly right. It's been that way for 20 years, 25.
And it's never going to get better.
But it's snowballing. It's been that way for 20 years, but it's snowballing. And that ball is, is big right now. 10 years from now, it'll be huge and probably unstoppable.
If I can get to Nashville, I could actually skirt around in Nashville probably easier than I can Murfreesboro or a good bit of Murfreesboro. There's certain parts of Murfreesboro, I do everything to avoid that I can.
All right. Well, we'll continue this conversation later. Thank you Doug.
Thank you.
Anything else Doug?
Yeah, I do have something to talk about, maybe just to get some direction from the commission. This is kind of in regard to the, the last public hearings that we had at the planning commission a few weeks back regarding those applicants that will submit rezoning applications without concept plans, really no idea what they want to do. You know, when we counsel applicants and I, I tell them pretty much on the, on the front end, I said, the commission is getting a little more wary of just what I would call speculative rezonings. So I said, you need to have a good idea of what you want to do before you apply. Understanding, and of course, and they, most of the applicants would realize this, because we, I mean, we tell them, is that even if somebody comes in, especially if they're going for a conventional zone, like a commercial services, heavy and light industrial, whatever, name the category, those aren't planned developments. So even if somebody came in, like the one we saw a little earlier on the agenda today, the landscape business out on Highway 96 Franklin Road, that was what he said he wanted to do in his application and during the public hearing. But there would have been nothing I could have done if he'd have changed his mind and decided he wanted to put some sort of a retail shop there. You know, the zoning is in place. So I guess from staff standpoint, understanding that you don't necessarily like speculative rezonings, I guess I'm just looking for some direction as to what other things I might be able to say to the applicants regarding that. If there's, really, I'm just looking for some discussion on that. You know, there are some rezonings that, and we've seen them where it just, it's commercial all around it, if it's near an interchange or something like that, where it's not going to be residential. I think everybody knows it's not going to be residential, so it makes sense to do that. But also for those ones that maybe it doesn't make as much sense, you know, if it's, if it really is just pure speculative rezoning and they're not really sure what they ever want to do. I guess I'd just like a little discussion on that really, just to see what your thoughts are on all that.
Speculative rezoning, how comfortable are you, are you on accepting that speculation of a business?
Yeah, well, I think it goes back to a case by case basis really, depending on where it is. You know, like I said, there are some, when I look at them, you know, I make recommendations based on what I feel is in the comprehensive plan, what the surrounding area looks like and things like that. That's what staff recommendation will be made on. I think it just goes back to location, a lot of it, and what other development trends are in that area. Honestly, I can't say that, there'll be some that I really don't have an issue with. There'll be some that I'm thinking to myself, yeah, this may not be a good time or good place for this. And I try to, you know, articulate that in the staff comments.
Is it pretty common in other counties for approval of this type of?
Yeah, I've, you know, I've never researched that. I know Williamson County doesn't have many rezoning applications. I don't know about Wilson County. Cannon County, I think, has zoning now. I don't know how they're going. Bedford County, I know has zoning, but I don't know how, what their activity, I've never really have looked into that. I dare say though, that with my experience working at the city, I would say that most of the ones that would come in, they may have an idea, but they may not have gotten to the point where they're doing a concept plan or anything like that. But even some of the plans that we see here, the concept plans, I mean, it's really nothing more than just us putting something out and drawing it on there for them. I mean, they're not binding. And, you know, I tell them that on the front end, that they're not binding. You know, there's really nothing that I can do to make him build that plan unless it's a planned development, which I don't think, I think they have their place, planned developments as far as commercial development's concerned. But at the same time, I don't want to see just every zoning we look at being a planned development approach. I just don't know if that's really going to work.
You know, it does create a comfort zone because it does lock them in.
Oh, sure. And I understand that. And like I said, there are times when that's, when that's not a bad thing.
You know, to, to your point Doug, if we approve 300 lots somewhere, there's a certain amount of demand for some retail relative to those lots somewhere within that area. And I, you know, I don't know where you put it or, and it's probably a case by case basis, like you said, but you kind of feel like, the deal the other night was, the community is not there yet. Do we need to protect those people until they buy the house? I don't know. Maybe, maybe we were wrong.
Some of that, some of that speculation, I can see, I can see what, exactly what you're saying. We would be uncomfortable with putting, approving it without having some idea what's going in there. But there are other areas that, that there already, it's a node and, and it would not cause any of us heartburn. The one the other night was a little unique because of what happened prior to that. And Commissioner Allen cleared all that up as we got toward the end of that. My biggest concern is from a legal perspective, you know, if, if we say, well, you can do that, but the next month we'll tell somebody else, no, you can't do that. And is that going to create issues for us as a county that Nick is going to have to litigate? So, and I'm not sure, I'm not even sure how, how you can address that, other than to say, no, it's inappropriate, that commercial development's inappropriate for this residential neighborhood. That might be all we need. But if you come to something, somewhat of a node and we, we want to know what's going in there, that, that's my biggest concern is that, how can we, how can we legally, you know, turn some type of, of a development opportunity down for speculation? I don't know. I just have all these mixed feelings going on inside of me about things like that. Sometimes there's residential development that doesn't want any other residential development out there because, you know, it's country, this is what I want.
It was country.
How many times have you heard that? You know, thousands of times. And we, we don't want a planned unit because of the number of houses. And, and we, we, we do what's in the best interest, we think of the county when we make those decisions. And, and this, what you're talking about is, it just creates some confusion in my mind. Some of it's clear, but some of it's not. And I, I think that's what you're saying Doug, is, is can you give us some guidance? And I'd have to turn the tables right back around on you. Can you give us some guidance?
On that issue, how much input, like the deal north of Watch Hill that night, it was creating almost a new node other than something that had been across the street for years.
Grandfathered in.
Yeah, kind of grandfathered in, even if it wasn't zoned, it, you know, it had been there for years. How much input from the community, the neighborhood? I mean, if you, if we get a number of files on it, do we factor that in? And how much should we factor that in?
Well, you know, the whole purpose of the public hearing is to hear testimony from the people that live out in the area that might identify things that maybe we just didn't know about. I mean, that, that's the whole purpose of that. You know, it's not a, and I tell applicants this all the time, it's not, you know, the chairman doesn't go, how many people are for this, how many people are against it? And they vote that way. It's not, it's not supposed to work that way. And I'm not saying it does here, that's not the case. But it's, it's challenging sometimes that, if you remember right, with that development, it actually, the commercial part actually started out as part of the planned development. And it was taken out because the neighbors in the area were concerned. And, you know, I understand that. So the developer just decided, well, I'm just going to go ahead and I'll just leave that part out and sometime in the future, we'll go ahead and maybe try to add it back in. So that's what they were trying to do, was add it back in. Now, the notifications that would have went out for that were a lot different than they would have for the entire development because they were only asking for rezoning of that small area right there at the intersection. You know, we notified property owners within 500 feet, put a sign out. And I know one lady that spoke was a little upset that, you know, she hadn't gotten notification in the mail, they didn't have any input into the process. And, you know, I understand that. But for conventional rezonings outside of PUDs, there are no requirements for neighborhood meetings. Only time we require a neighborhood meeting is with a planned development. And I've, now I told, when they came in here, the first pitched the idea of zoning that land, I haven't told them. I said, you remember what happened the last time this came up? You know, because we were all at the neighborhood meeting when it first came up and talking about myself and the engineering consultant. I said, you remember in the developer, you remember what happened? And, you know, I can't make them have a neighborhood meeting at that point, based on what's in our regulations right now. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of where we are as staff. You know, we can kind of explain to them what our concerns are. And they can do with it what they please at that point. You know, they can choose to move forward, they can choose to try to talk to some of the neighbors. They may tell us they're going to and then it doesn't happen.
How much should be on the developer to go do some legwork with the neighbors and talk to the community?
Well, and I always, yeah, I frequently tell developers or anybody, any applicants, even to the board of zoning appeals, if I meet with some of them, that it's always a good idea to talk to your neighbors and the county commissioner of that district. So they, which I believe, my understanding is they did contact Commissioner Piercey about that.
They did, but a number of other people did also.
Yeah.
According to what he told me.
Right. So, you know, at that point.
And they were opposed, you know, opposed to.
Right. So I guess ultimately the, the question is, there may not be a really good answer to what I'm asking, I guess, is that we just kind of continue on and we just let the applicants know this is, I mean, these are some of the things you're going to deal with, especially, because we get them when people call up and just say, well, I just want to own my property commercial. What do you want to do with it? Well, I don't know. I just, I mean, they're trying to make more money off it, which I don't fault them for that. I mean, that's, that's, if they own the property, it's their right to ask.
Okay, so I have a question. And just help me, help me sort of fact check my memory. Because when we went through the comprehensive plan and we went to this model of how we did rezoning, rezoning, we were trying to get away from conditional use permits.
Correct.
And so what I remember sort of being our guiding principle was, let's go ahead and identify the areas that we think are going to be developed into, you know, commercial and create those, anticipate, yeah, create those nodes. Go ahead and anticipate that. And then one of the things we also talked about was also trying to preserve the character of these communities. And we never really did go back in with a specific community plan for some of these different little pockets, you know, that we were concerned about. So I don't know if in this upcoming comprehensive plan, that's something that needs to be factored in and you would have neighbors. But my sort of guiding principle is, I remember Josh telling us, you know, because everything by default is zoned residential, the only time we really get a strong say so is when it comes to a rezoning. And that was part of the reason that we put in the layers that we did here. So I, I take that responsibility very seriously because it's the, it's kind of that only line of defense that that community has. And so in my mind, again, our challenge is always to identify the highest and best use of the, of the land. I, I don't know if that's the highest and best use of the land, if I don't know what you're going to do with it, you know, if you don't have some idea. So, so again, so I'm, I'm going to lean on the side of not giving the okay until I have some reason to determine that that's going to be for the benefit of that community. And then I, and you do, you know, we've always talked about trying to balance the property owner rights of the person who wants to do the development versus the people that it's going to impact, you know, in that community. So, so I guess the, the fact check part that I'm thinking about is, you know, we need to know, I feel like, don't we? We need to have some idea of what the benefit to that community is, it's going to be if we're going to rezone it. Because that's, again, that's the only time we get to pump the brakes.
I like that one. What's the benefit to the community? That's a good question to ask on every rezone. Our last speaker.
Well, the only other thing I was going to say is, and along those lines, then I wonder, do we need to factor into our regulations, if you want commercial zoning adjacent to a PUD, do you have to notify everybody in the PUD? You know, do we change the notification? Because, you know, just like with that one, I, I could see how they, that community felt like, they're trying to slip something on me, you know? I had a say so on the front end and then I didn't on this end. Yeah, we're, it's, you know, when, nobody's going to give us the benefit of the doubt that we were just following our regulations, which is what's make me, makes me wonder, is that, do we need to change our regulations? Is that something to give any thought to about how we do notifications? And, you know, would it have made sense there to notify, you know, the homers? I, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that. I'm just throwing it out there. Along the same thing with the community meetings, you know, when somebody wants to, to rezone something commercial in an area that's not in one of our nodes or is not one of those no brainers, should we in our regulations require a community meeting? I don't know. Again, I'm trying to think about, you know, how do you factor in, you know, again, balancing everybody's property rights and, and really giving us the most information and the, and the best opportunity for good information. Because the more people who weigh in on it, the more information we have, you know, and just, you know, the better I think the overall decision can be. So I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Our last meeting, we approved on Highway 231, a car lot. That puts about four car lots, about a mile and a half, two miles, one over, just over in Bedford County and then about three in Rutherford County right there. And I called you about that. I remember Murfreesboro tried to put control car lots or something, but.
Made me so many mouth hurt.
Yeah, can we, like what you say, can, can we say that's enough car lots or can't? You don't have any hands or ties?
Well, yeah, I mean, currently, there's nothing in our ordinance. The only thing we really have distance requirements on our uses like rock quarries, adult entertainment, things like that. We don't have them on just what you're talking about, like I use car lots, car lots in general, you know, we don't, we just, we don't have anything like that. We never have.
So it's a bit of a discretion, like, oh, something about if one comes in, I can be defended, at least they, that's enough car lots.
Well, right. And plus, yeah, and like I said, you know, there's, I can't, even if he comes in and says, I want to put a car lot there, there's no guarantee it's going to be that. With commercial general zone, he can do what's ever allowed in the zoning. If he changes his mind, says, you know what I don't want to do a car lot, I'm going to open up a, you name the business. I mean, as long as it meets the zoning requirement, there's really nothing I can do about it. Can't stop it. Right.
Rhonda, you used the term one time, PUD light, that I always liked, you know, and it's, and is there, can there be something that's kind of a cross between the PUD light that's less cumbersome for our staff and the CUP?
And the CUP, the conditional use permit, use permit that has restrictions on it? Maybe this is a planned commercial development, a PCD, or some sort of new zoning classification? I don't know. But some, gives us some sort of specifics to what the property has to be used for? And if they, and it's just, it's like that until they apply for something different.
That's what backdoors the CUP done.
Well, and, you know, and currently, you know, basically what we, I mean, that's what you're saying is, you know, more planned development approach for those type of lots. You know, I could, right, right. I see, and, you know, because I could make the argument, well, you know, the whole zoning ordinance is that. Because somebody could come in and say, I want commercial, whatever, zoning, commercial services, we'll just use that one. And I can open, right.
It's too broad.
Right, it's too broad. But I can, I was going to say, I can go in and look at the appendix, both the appendices or two of them that we have in our zoning ordinance, say, okay, you can do these businesses, you can't do these businesses. That, in a sense, already exists. It's just more macro level than it is, I guess, micro level. I guess you're looking something a little more fine tuned, I guess, is kind of what you're talking about.
Because the building's going to look like this and it's going to be for this intended purpose. And if you're going to, you know, if they, if they're going to come in and apply for a commercial thing and we don't like the idea of having a car lot in the neighborhood, they want to put in a little neighborhood sandwich shop or something. We can live with that, but we don't want to give them the same ability to change their sandwich shop to a car lot.
Dude, now, now you're talking about real planning now. Come on.
No, I mean, I just want to give the option. Maybe this is being, maybe, I don't want to be too cumbersome for you guys. But I, I want to address these concerns. So we have that ability of the PUD light or something similar.
The part of that, that I, there's two parts of that that I really like. And one of them really is, we don't have a design review process. And PUD kind of gives us that sense of security of what something's going to look like. And so, again, I think that's going to increase a neighbor's comfort level if they know that whatever's going in there is at least going to look like it fits into that community. It looks like it belongs in that community. And that's part of what protecting that, the character of that community is. And so now, if you're a doctor's office out of there or you're dealing sandwiches out of there, when I drive by, if it looks like it fits into the community, it's going to feel more like it fits into the community. So, so that design element of that PUD, I think, would put a lot of, you know, folks' minds at ease. And so that, that may be a piece of that. I do also like the possibility of narrowing the scope. And I don't know if you can do that, maybe there's a, you know, commercial services one, you know, or commercial services two.
Well, I mean, we could always create another zone that, I mean, now that would have to be something that would have to go through this body and then the county commission, because that's an ordinance amendment. But, I mean, it's always something we can look into.
I'm just thinking if there's some way to, to make that zoning more compact, so it's not always just so broad that you can go from here to here on something.
But if we went that way, I would also like to see, if we're going to be building these things next to subdivisions, I think we do need the design and architectural control that a PUD would give us. Because you don't want to make a nice neighborhood with some modern looking craftsman homes and have a concrete block building right next door to it.
When it comes, yeah, and when it comes to design review, that's something we need to really be cautious about because the county isn't authorized to have that. It's even questionable whether or not we can make PUDs put 50% brick on their homes, to be honest with you. Most developers don't have a problem with that. So it's, I don't think we're, you know, in any legal turmoil or anything, but.
On a PUD, you can turn them down for just about anything that's distasteful or that doesn't fit with the community. Isn't that the purpose of a PUD?
Well, the, yeah, I mean, that's a lot of the, even the residential PUDs we see, you know, that's why we require them to have neighborhood meetings and everything to get the input from the area.
Don't necessarily allow us to do that, have architectural standards, but the PUD does. That's why I like the first, the commercial, planned commercial development.
Right.
Because we can have some control. Some control of what it's going to look like and it's going to blend with the community.
Does, do, do our regulations not give us that control, Doug?
For a design review, you're talking about?
Design review, or do state regulations not give us?
It's the state, yeah.
I'm going to say one other thing. Doug and myself dealt with one thing, I guess it was last week. An article showed up in the Knoxville newspaper talking about a piece of property here in Rutherford County that some people purchased. And the article talked about the fact that it was changed from agriculture, that they were going to redevelop this property into residential and it had been changed from agriculture. And it's going to have some agriculture in it and they were going to do all types of things in this property. And I got all types of grief over that because they were doing away with agriculture in Rutherford County. And where the property was, I knew we didn't have anything that was agriculture or it was zoned agriculture. And I talked to Doug about that and we checked it out and whatever. But, but I've re-talked to the people that were doing that. And so I asked them, I personally asked them, I said, no, this isn't zoned agriculture at all. But, but I said, these people bought this property to do something with it. But I said, my question to you is, if a farmer has property out here and he has kept this property as far as 401K and he decides he wants to use this property to sell for his retirement, are you telling him, no, he can't sell that property? He's going to have to stay a farmer the rest of his life? He has no business selling his property. He said he was going to be a farmer. He's got it that way. He's got it zoned as a farmer. He's going to be a farmer the rest of his life and y'all don't have any business changing it. He said, well, I never thought about it like that. I said, well, that's what you just told me, that you didn't want any more agricultural land changed in Rutherford County. I said, well, you need to think about that sort of thing. I said, this still is America. And I said, we, I said, when you own the planning commission, you've still got to think about these things. You've still got people that pay land rights and property rights. And, and I said, every time I sit there and look at this thing, I think about that. I said, that man's got something in his mind that he's wanting to do with his property and with his land. We had one come up other night that, that we, we turned down. But right in front of that piece of property where he's wanting to do something with, the city of Murfreesboro has zoned it every bit commercial, right in front of him. They hadn't done anything with it yet. Nobody's put anything commercial in front of him. But they've also zoned a good part of it back there, I think multifamily and whatever. And everything else around there is multifamily, whatever. So he was wanting to do that. So, you know, when you look at these things, I totally agree. We'd like to know what's going to go there. But yet we have to also think about the fact that these individuals have bought this property and they want to do something with it. And we still got to think that way. I mean, I come out of the agricultural world and I come out of this thing, but I've been to too many farmers who said, you know, I've kept this land all my life and now I'm down to this point of my life where my children don't want it anymore. And if I want to sell it, that, that's my savings account. So I guess that's my two cents. That's all I'm throwing in there.
And in this county, for 30, 40 years, that farmer has tolerated, maybe a subdivision next door and what goes with that. And most times it's very good, but sometimes it's not, you know? He's tolerated that, why should his neighbor 40 years ago got to do it and he not get to do it now?
I agree. And if I could just maybe, just kind of dovetailing on with the whole conversation, some things that, that I've thought about possibly, and I want to just at least get your opinion on. When we have this meeting, the day meeting, I already know what rezonings are going to be heard at the following meeting. You know, the one, our first night meeting here coming up in, in August. That deadline's already gone by, so I already know what they are. Would you like for me to, you know, at the end of our day meeting, you know, as a, as an agenda item, just say, okay, this is what we've received coming up in August, just kind of a brief overview of what they are? Just to see if you have questions or comments and things that we can, yeah, we can relay back to the applicant just to say, okay, you, I mean, obviously they can still move forward regardless, that's their right. But say, these are some of the concerns that were addressed, or at least, you know, addressed to us as we were, as we showed the planning commission what was being proposed.
It needs to be a limited discussion, if at all.
Right.
And not, not as extensive as we've had today.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that we don't want to start a public hearing.
Right, oh yeah, no, agreed. Yeah, it wouldn't be for that. We'd still have the public hearing and everything and like we normally would. But this would at least, because a lot of the times, the first time you get to look at these cases is when the agenda goes out. This would give you a little bit of a jump on that. So that was just a thought. I mean, if you guys are interested, fine. If not, I don't have to, it was just something I thought you might like.
Try it and see how it goes.
Okay.
From a legal perspective, that if we came up, if we had a public hearing like we had at our last six o'clock meeting and we wanted to tell the developer, you heard all of this opposition, you see all of this opposition, we're not going to go forward to it until you sit down with the neighborhood and have a meeting with them. Do we have that flexibility? Can we say, we're going to sit this thing back a month until you have? And if you don't do that, then we're, we're just not going to approve it. Because it's not conducive to the, can we dictate that?
I probably need to talk with Nick a little bit about that.
There you go, Nick. Can we do that?
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
I'm, I'm thinking there are times, just like the other night, you know, you've probably told that applicant, you need to have a meeting. And they chose not to. But if we gave it to them point blank, we're not approving this till you sit down with the neighborhood and listen to what they have to say. Because that's what we're going to do and you're not going to like the outcome unless you do it.
Right, and that's, I mean, obviously, we don't want to do that, but without going through our process.
That's what I'm saying. The whole legal issue, but that's what we wanted to happen.
Well, but that goes back to my point of, if we put it in our guidelines, if we put it in our regulations, that if you're going to have, you know, commercial zoning change or, you know, whatever, you know, this close to a neighborhood and there's nothing else around it, or however we want to word that, whatever, however we want to design that. If we put in the regulations about a community meeting, because you said, there's only one time right now where they have to have one. And is that a PUD, you said?
That's for PUD zoning, yeah.
If we can put it in there for PUD, can't we put it in there for other things as well?
Yeah. I mean, we could, or strongly, if nothing else, strongly recommend the applicant that they do that. I know the city, I don't know if Murfreesboro, I don't know if this is an actual requirement, but I've had discussions with some of their planners and they say they pretty much have neighborhood meetings for everything now, any rezonings. I don't know if that's, again, not codified or not, but that's something that, I know they're, they're advising a lot of their applicants about.
The one thing that would help with that, and I know on this last one, we had it cut off road, almost a comparison of zoning because the residential medium density, what would that allow compared to the commercial? Because it may be more detrimental to the community to have condos and townhomes and a lot more people crammed on those spaces than just a commercial services there. So almost in certain situations, a comparison zone would be nice for them to, to relate to the community. Not in a threatening sort of way, you could have this or you could have this, but here's the potentials with this. Kind of why I wrestle with that a lot in review of these is what, what, if it stays the way it is now, what could potentially go in there? Sometimes it may be more detrimental to the community than what they're proposing.
And something I know that, I heard this said one time and I thought it was, it's always stuck with me. If you say no to this, you're saying yes to something else, you know? And that, that kind of goes to what you're saying, you know? Okay, if not this, then what else, you know, what else could it be?
I have a question about the other night as well. We, my focus is always the livability, the long-term livability of a community. And I hadn't even really thought about this until somebody said it the other night. And I don't remember which, who, who even brought it up. But they were talking about keeping that green buffer from Highway 231 to those homes, you know, and noise and all those kinds of things. And that, that was a livability thing that really clicked in my head. And we don't have, to my knowledge, we don't have anything like that that requires, you know, a green buffer from, you know, a major highway. Again, I'm just wondering, is that something that we should have, should have thought about, should have talked about, you know? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that, I don't know if that belongs anywhere in our code or not, but it is just something that, like I said, when it, once they said it out loud, it made a lot of sense to me. It does, I, I don't know that maybe a landscape buffer might have been just as fine or, I don't know. I guess I'm asking you, you know, because there is noise and there is, you know, all of that, you know? What's it going to be like? Because that road's only going to get busier, you know? We have as few cars on the roads today as we're ever going to have. We already know how busy that road is. Is, is that anything that we need to be thinking about now when we're zoning close to major arterial roads? And I'm just talking about the major ones.
Right.
Is it?
I mean, again, it's something that we can look at. I know we talked about something on those lines around Manchester Highway when we were dealing with some rezonings down in that area. But you're right, there's nothing in our code that says you have to be X amount of feet from a state road or like an arterial road or something like that. I, I mean, I'll just have to research that some.
I'm glad you brought up Manchester, I had forgotten about that. But that's, those, protecting those corridors, those, you know, that, that character, neighborhood character, we really need to make sure that we're mindful of how we fold that into this update for the comprehensive plan. Because that was something we talked about doing and I think maybe one or two neighborhoods had done one, where like those neighborhoods actually did their own and engaged. I don't remember where it was. Was it, was it Eagleville, Christianity? Was, was, had somebody done one? There was, somebody had done one before we did our last comprehensive plan. And we didn't, we, I don't think we ended up using it. I know there was one.
Yeah, I don't, I think I know what you're talking about, I just can't think of what it was, but, yeah.
But I think if we do, again, if we do those things and then we work those ideas into, like you should codify, you know, some of those things, again, it just gives us a guide, it gives us a tool. It's just good planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Do you like the fact that staff makes recommendations on rezonings?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. I know we don't always agree with you.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, and I tell people, when I'm, when I, yeah, nice, thanks. Yeah, when I, when I tell, yeah, when I tell people, you know, I've, I've been on the commission or worked with planning commissions long enough, especially this one, where I can usually look at a request somebody brings in, I can, in my mind, I'm not always right, but in my mind, I can pretty much look at it and say, don't waste your time because it's never going to go through. So there's a lot of applications that you never see coming here because we pretty much nip them in the bud on the front end.
If, if we have one, here's why, I'm going to look at Giles' recommendation. If the county commissioner's got anything to say, I'm going to look at one. And then I'm going to look at whatever community input there is into it. And take all of those in, try to take all of those into account.
So from staff standpoint, what we're looking at, of course, is, you know, the zoning in the area. We're looking at the comprehensive plan, the recommendations it makes and things like that. You know, I've seen it done both ways as far as staff recommendations. I've seen where we used to work, they didn't. Here, we do. I mean, I, I can do it either way. I just didn't know if it was one of those things where you said, you know, Doug, just give us the facts and we'll make the decision from there.
Like, I like your opinion. And there was one thing that Pettis said a minute ago that I wanted to follow up on, and that was, when we do look at the zoning in the area, if, if that zone has not been developed at all, but it's there, again, from a planning standpoint, should we be saying that some of that needs to already be built out before we add more to it? Does that make sense or does it not? I don't know.
Well, yeah, I understand where you're going with it.
Because you look at that and you go, well, there's, it's already up there, just do that one.
But if you're, I guess what I would come back to is if it's already zoned commercial along the corridor, and, I mean, I'm just not, I'm not talking specifically about any application, just in, in general. But if it's already zoned pretty much all around it, even though there's no commercial development now, it's coming at some point.
Because the ones that, the ones that are easy for me to vote for are the ones like right adjacent to 840, you know? It's like, that, that's a no brainer to me. And so even though there's nothing maybe that's been developed already, I know it's, I know it's going to be. But like on the ones down, you know, 231, you've got huge, you know, tracts of land that are still rural, that might be zoned for that, but they still look and feel rural.
And a lot, and a lot of residential within those areas too. Some of it in subdivisions, some of it just acreage tracts.
Right, so that feeds into my timing thing that we talked about was, is this a premature request? Is the, you know, is the time right for this? So, I don't know.
We're, we're losing our membership, so we probably need to wrap this up. And I can't, Nick's probably got some stuff to do anyway. But one particular thing, last month, that strip of land that they wanted to rezone, if there were something that wanted to come in there, and I'm going to say a church that wanted to come in there, would it even come before this body?
Depending on the size. If it were under 150 occupancy, it's, we consider churches religious uses as community assembly and they're broken down into three levels, small, medium and large. If it's under 150, it's by right. The only thing you're going to see is a site plan. If it's between 150 and 500, that has to be a special exception, which goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but you would still see a site plan at some point. If it's over 500, depending on the zone they're in, but for residential zonings, it's not allowed. They would have to rezone the property at that point.
The cautious thing about people who live in an area like that is that someone may come in and put in a, a church that they would find offensive and a small church. And they would be a lot worse off than what was planned to go in there. So folks need to be at least educated that there are some things that could go in there and you have no say so about it. So at least rezoning it might.
So, at least rezoning it might give them some opportunity to, uh, on the front end to have at least these type of things can go in there. So, so there are some, some things that might come back to bite that community in the fanny if they're not real careful. And, and some unscrupulous developer would probably try to pay them back in a situation like that. So, they really need to be mindful that there are some things that could go in there, and they have no control over it, we have no control over it, that they might find a lot less desirable than anything else that could go in there. The chances of that happening are very slim, and I know that, but, but there is at least a chance out there.
Well, and we also know that with our regulations, we can't safeguard against anything that's going to please everybody. It's just, you know, so you might have 50% of those neighbors happy with the church, and 50% happy with the sandwich shop, you know?
Doug, you're, you're looking for some guidance for us, and you didn't get a lot, but we have the same concerns that you have. And most of them are, are just from a, a legal perspective. We can make a decision whether we think it's in the best interest of that community for that to be rezoned, but from a legal perspective, especially as we go forward over the next 10, 20 years, uh, those legalities are, are going to become more and more and more in the forefront. Uh, so, we're going to be challenged more and more and more, and that's, that's what I'm concerned about, is that, is that can we be consistent, uh, to the point where we're not challenged with those type of things? And I, I'm not sure we've given you any answers, but our concerns are probably just exactly like your concerns.
Well, I'm going to, I'll have some conversations with Nick about some of the things we've talked about today, and we'll just kind of see where they, where they go. And, I mean, I'll just continue advising applicants when I talk to them, that, you know, if you don't have, and I mean, I've, I've had one just the other day with somebody who already has applied, that said, you know, I need a concept plan. And they sent me what they said was a concept plan, and I got back with them and said, you got to do better than this. I said, this isn't, this isn't, I was expecting a lot more. So, uh, we'll see what we end up getting, but, uh, anyway.
That, that's where your job is important to us, and it's part of your job that we never see, but I can tell you that we're appreciative of those kinds of things, just like you're saying, it'll never pass, so you can just probably give up on it right now. Those type of things, we're appreciative of, that.
He tells them 50/50. He knows.
Yeah, everybody that comes in will ask me, do you think I get a good chance of this? No, you got 50/50. That's, I tell everybody the same thing, but, you know, I, I'll tell them, you know, I've, if I think it's a lost cause in my mind, I'll just say, I don't think the chances